May we be loyal to the word of God in guiding us in the decisions we are about to embark upon? Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, ungrateful, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Kramer?
Here.
Farmer?
Here.
Gilbert?
Here.
Hicks?
Here.
Krieger?
Here.
Pinkston?
Hey, I'm here.
Ruth?
Here.
We are all here tonight. Very good. First item of business is to approve the minutes of our May 28 meeting. Mr. Ruth, would you please read the motion to that?
I move the Schwartz Creek City Council approved the minutes of the regular council meeting held Tuesday, May 28, 2019, to be circulated and placed on file.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any additions or corrections to be made to the minutes? Do not look like there are. I would like to compliment the staff here on getting the minutes so well done. I haven't called anything in weeks that I could bring up. Call the roll, please, on the motion.
Farmer?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Pinkston?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
The motion passes. Next item of business is to approve the agenda for this evening. Mr. Ruth, is there any additional items to go ahead?
There is an addition that was digitally sent out Friday and should be available to everybody in heart via the purchase and development agreement with the exhibits. That'll be an additional communication only. It's got to be posted.
Okay, okay. That's an addition to the city manager's report, not really an addition to the agenda. Mr. Kramer, would you please read the motion to accept the agenda?
Yes, sir. Yes. I move the Schwartz Creek City Council approved agenda as printed for the regular council meeting on June 10, 2019, to be circulated and placed on file.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Anybody on the council have anything that I see on the agenda that's not there?
Just one thing I'd like to bring up. And that's the pulse for the council as far as this, what do you call it? It was the capital insurance, uh, insurance for the sewer system in the village.
The National League of Cities private insurance proposal that was on the last, in the last packet.
Yeah. City managers want us to get a feeling for what the council wants to do for that.
Well, that's really not anything to do with the agenda itself. That has to do with actually reports or whatever. You bring it up in a couple of minutes, we'll handle that.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Gilbert?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Pinkston?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
The motion passes. Yeah, now the city manager's report. We have that before us. And the addition yet, Mr. Ruth brought up. You also have conclusions that we would like to discuss.
Yeah, I'll just find it.
Okay, why don't you look on there and ask if anybody else has anything?
Question. On the Merrick Apple property, if that sells, are they talking about the whole section there, all the way down to Ingalls, the playground and everything, or just the building?
My understanding was the school was going to retain some of those open grounds, possibly the ball field. I don't know. And I made an inquiry last week with some of the staff to see where that was because it's been, I think it's been at least 180 days since they announced a purchase agreement with the Genesee County-based group that can do senior housing there. We had an introductory meeting. I haven't heard anything since. And so I'm not sure where that purchase agreement stands in its totality. And I don't know what grounds or other pieces of that property were included. That's a lot of property. Quite a bit.
Anything else, Dr. Pinkston? Take one more question?
Well, partially. I didn't know the answer.
Didn't know the answer.
Mr. Kramer, I don't believe that we have a motion for it.
No, we do not.
Why don't you read that? And then we can discuss it after we have the motion.
Very good. I move the city, the Schwartz Creek City Council accept the city manager's report of June 10, 2019, including reports and communications to be circulated and placed on file.
Just one second that we can discuss this.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions now or comments on anything?
Just one comment. I found a correction. I think we need page nine of our city council packet. Item number four there at the top of the page. I think, I think the word "flag" is supposed to replace the word "fire retirement picture grounds." That's what I thought it was. The word "flag" replaces the word "fire retirement picture grounds" from the sale.
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you. Anything else? No questions or anything today? If not, we'll ask the court to call the roll on the motion, please.
Hicks?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Pinkston?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Gilbert?
No.
Yes.
Thank you, Patersons. In the packet, there is a report from the state about the, I don't know, from the state, probably from our attorney, about the state law that was passed regarding charitable solicitations because there's questions about the group that was soliciting in our city for a couple of weekends for a hundred veterans in Georgia. And there's nothing that we can do to stop them doing that because the state allows any charitable groups, especially those serving veterans, to solicitate there. And we cannot regulate that. We can insist that they have insurance, liability insurance, and that they are putting out traffic and stuff to make sure they're safe.
Do you know if anybody had confirmed they were a 501(c)(3) or?
I did not stop them, Dr. Lewis.
Okay.
I just heard about it from the region.
Jeremy, they are, because after I stopped, they gave me $20 and I kind of took a value skip to it. So I have a friend that's a computer geek and she found that they are.
Okay, out of Florida?
Uh-huh.
Okay, very good.
That's actually where they built the houses, are in Florida.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
If you do see someone in the future though, it would be appropriate to ask for verification that they are a real charitable organization, or a member of IRS law. And that they also follow the state law to safely conduct their duties.
And I wanted to thank the city manager for providing info on that charitable solicitation and role play in our packet.
Okay, we have a bunch of monthly reports in our packet. Any questions on any of those? I did have a question on the treasurer. And there was a check that was paid for 55 shirts. And it seemed to me that, I think it was $4.50 a shirt. That was an awfully cheap price for shirts for buying them. If we're just having them cleaned, I don't know if that's a good price or what. I just wondered. I hadn't seen something like that before in the packet.
We've switched the manner in which we provide uniforms. Traditionally, we've had a service come in that provides a uniform tailored with names for each DPW employee. And that would provide for the cleaning and replacement thereof.
Okay.
And there was weekly or biweekly charges for that service. But there was some issues with the service. And so we provide some items directly, which we've done, as far as personal protective gear, wherever. But we extended that in lieu of paying for the exterior service to provide some summertime shirts, t-shirts and things like that for appropriate wear in the right jobs. And so that's probably the purchase we're looking at.
Probably is, yes. Good price for the shirts.
I can double check this to make sure we're talking about the same thing. I'll put a note for the next report. But I believe that's exactly what the payment would be for.
I was 55 shirts and the price came out like 45 a shirt. That's a good price. Even if they're just t-shirts. The city name out by the sublease or something? Thank you. The rest of the items in the packet have to do with our business this evening. So we will open the meeting to the public. Anyone here wishes to address the council of anything, please, put your name and address and what's on your mind. Steve?
Steve Schumaker, 7446 Country Meadow. Well, I actually looked into that group. They're, yes, in Florida. They are a 501(c)(3), but they are not licensed to solicit it in the state. They don't have a license. They can't even, you can't send a letter to anybody in Michigan requesting money, much less standing at the corner and ask for money. So they're not registered as a foreign corporation for that. They mainly have an office here. But it could be some third-party charitable organization. But then they should be really putting that on their signs or whatever too. So that shouldn't have been out there really. So it almost seems like we should find out who these people are. And I mean, you don't want our citizens to be out there and try to figure this out so they don't feel bad. Call and get the police to get them out. Will they legit at all?
Sure.
Or get in competition with them, you know?
That would be something our police officers could do if you see someone there that's not local. If they see someone, they could stop and check out. But are these people legitimately supposed to be doing that?
When this law came about in 2017, part of the issue that the state was trying to correct, and I can't think of the legal term for it, but in enabling free speech, which of course we do. If you have to go get a permit to have speech, then it's not free speech. There's a phrase for that. And I can't think of what it is. But in line with that, they exempted groups doing non-commercial speech in door-to-door solicitation. So at that point in time, when the city had adjusted solicitation ordinance to permit commercial solicitation, there are still groups that are exempt carte blanche. So church groups and other nonprofits can go door-to-door exercising free speech without first having to get permission to exercise free speech. Because non-commercial speech is protected more than commercial. And I think that's the same extension we see here for those folks out in public areas, albeit in intersection with traffic control devices, is that the state was trying to create an environment where people could exercise that speech, even if it's in the form of solicitation, heavily protecting and enumerating veteran groups among those. And so all I can say right now is a very careful reading of the statutes by the attorney or maybe some expertise provided by Metro could point us in the right direction. There is the ability for us to pass some local ordinances for a bit of control here, but not much. And certainly not against the intent of what the state was trying to accomplish a couple of years back with this law. But as far as having to be a Michigan nonprofit as opposed to one registered in Florida as a veteran group, I don't know. I'd be hesitant to boot them out of the corner or the intersection if they are in fact a nonprofit, a veteran nonprofit, using proper devices in a controlled intersection with people over the age of 18. Steve, Mr. Schumaker may very well be right. I don't know at this point. Those statutes were written with very specific intent or purposes in mind and with the idea that these groups shouldn't have to have a high level of scrutiny to go and do what they do. And so it's more about the time, place and manner in which it's done, not so much who they are, provided it's not a commercial solicitation. So we'll look into that a bit more. And I don't know if we'll ever see this feedback or not. But certainly we can expect others.
They were in Grand Blanc this weekend.
They may follow the festival circuit, as it were. You know, going where the people are busy. And Grand Blanc had their festival just last weekend. And they were here when we had ours. So it makes sense. But we'll learn a little bit more about it. I would, if there's questions, we can see if the police can help proactively get out there and make those inquiries. And just make sure it's safe and functioning, right? But that would probably be the appropriate mechanism by which to approach them and start making those inquiries or findings, as opposed to trying to have a conversation out your car window at a stoplight or a green light, as it were.
Speaking of solicitations, I've got a couple of people stuck in my house and tried to sell me stuff in the past month. I've asked both of them if they were licensed by the city to do that or approved by the city. And they told me that they weren't. How do we know that they are, Mr. Ruth?
We issue physical permits that they should have.
They should be able to show you the permit that they got from the state.
It's a paper and it has a copy of your ID and our signature on it with the date. And it is only good for a year. There's very few that have been given out in the last six to eight months.
And in part of the problem, and we've had this discussion internally, so the council's aware and the public's aware, is why don't you go up there and list who's approved to do solicitation? Because it creates an environment where someone can actively utilize that other valid solicitation permit to contact residents. So if we say that ABC Widget Company is permitted to do solicitation this week in the city, and here's what our certificates look like, look for it. If we actually literally put that statement, that image out there, then people can copy that and say, hey, I'm with ABC Widget Company and we're legit. It's on the Facebook page and the city webpage. And so we create our own certified version that can't be duplicated, or at least not easily, for those folks to be able to display. And that's information we can put out there, at least in the newsletters, that they should have the sealed permit by the city. It should be one of the first things they show people. Because we do very few of those. And a lot of people have the galls go and just blatantly lie about their permit status. And it is absolutely against the law and a risk to public safety.
Thank you. I would suggest that that would be something we like to see in the newsletter.
Yes. So, so per our discussions, you won't actually see which companies or copies of their certificate. But we are going to try to educate people on the idea that they're supposed to look for a sealed certificate or permit, rather, with those folks. And educate those people that are getting those to make sure it's the first thing they display.
Do you do very few of them because very few people are applying? Or because very few people are meeting the criteria that you have? Very few people are applying.
Very few people apply. We've denied, we deny our hats. We deny a significant percentage based on background checks. But we don't get many.
And they have to pay a fee too. So maybe they're trying to avoid that. I'm not sure. I do see conversations on Facebook and I try to tell people they have, they're supposed to show you a permit paper. And I clearly tell them that when they pick it up. You must have this on you when you go door-to-door. But I think we've only maybe had two that we've had in the last year that's been approved. So it shouldn't be that many people out there.
And again, there's a lot of exemptions for non-commercial groups and for those that have existing customer lists. So like the Schwanz person, they have customers. They can do that. And if other people flag them down or set up appointments or whatever, then they can go out and do their business and be in the neighborhoods doing that sales work. It's the ones that are doing unsolicited, so to speak, visits to homes or businesses that have to be permitted. The ordinance is worth a read. It changed dramatically two years ago because of these state law changes. So our powers are greatly reduced, but the system in some respects is much more rigid than it used to be. And there are people that try to avoid it. And they absolutely should have the police notified if that's the case.
Just for my information, how much is the fee?
We've called that.
Sometimes I want to say a hundred.
It's around a hundred dollars.
Okay.
So it's a one-time fee. And they can have multiple people on, like a lawn care company. It can be the person who owns the company coming in, but he can have seven solicitors on his permit. But each of them have to show their ID. Each of them have a background check. And each of them will have a specific permit with their ID on it. So it's not just the main owner. It is the person who is doing the soliciting. So that is an example of what we had. And they probably had seven employees that were soliciting under their name, but they were all approved through background checks, so.
And some of the franchisees, I think Comcast, have done that too.
Are there any lawn care companies? Because these are the people that come around.
That was, there was only one. And I can't recall the name of it. And it's been several months ago. And I know they were out and about because I came to my house. And he had probably six or seven solicitors. And most of them are fairly young, the solicitors were. But I can't remember the name of it. But other than that, once in a while, there's an Edward Jones investment that'll apply, someone from there. But very few people apply.
Yes, it is good to know.
So maybe we could put something on the city webpage about calling the city hall if you want a current list or inquiring. Maybe we could be more informative than that. Maybe some on Facebook saying, if you're, you know, that's what I told the woman I saw on Facebook. Call city hall. If you're looking at someone specific and you're questioning it, we can always check into it. But they should always show you that permit. I mean, I'm very clear about that to every one of them. You have to have that on you. So if they don't show you that, then that's probably a key. Something's not right.
Red flag.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, so close the first portion of public comments and get into our council business. And those end of council business is appointments. And let's see what page it is. I'm going to call on Mrs. Hicks, however, Mrs. Hicks. Steve Harbinger, there's a new appointment, so we'll cross them out.
All set? All right. Whereas the laws of the state of Michigan, the charter and ordinances of the city of Schwartz Creek, interregional agreements, and the city of Schwartz Creek is a member. And previous resolutions of the city council require and set terms of offices for various appointments to city boards and commissions, as well as appointments to non-city boards and commissions seeking representation by city officials. And whereas, whereas there exists a vacancy on the zoning board of appeals as well as positions soon to expire on the Board of Review, Planning Commission, and Downtown Development Authority. And whereas set appointments are bailable appointments, subject to affirmation of the city council. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Schwartz Creek City Council concur with mayor and city council appointment as follows. Board of Review resident, Richard Balbrick. Three-year term expiring June 30, 2022. Board of Review resident, Juan Tyler, three-year term expiring June 30, 2022. DDA resident, Sandra Raffielli, four-year term expiring June 30, 2023. Planning Commission resident is vacant for a three-year term expiring June 30, 2022. Planning Commission resident, Bud Grimes, three-year term expiring June 30, 2022. Planning Commission resident, Thomas Farrell, remainder of three-year term expiring November 23, 2020. Zoning Board of Appeals alternate, Tom Wyatt, three-year term expiring June 30, 2022.
Seven. There is also a vacancy for the DDA on the non-property interest of resident for your term expiring June 30, 2023. Motion's been made and seconded. Would you speak to the motion, Collins?
I'm not sure about Bud Grimes. I approve the rest of them. You got a curve. I'm used to it.
Anyone else? All right, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Krieger?
Yes.
Pinkston?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
That motion passes. Our next item of business is Resolution A to B to approve fiscal year 2019 to 2020 city budget. So that's quite a package. We'll move through. Hopefully everybody's got time to look it through. We've had it for several of our meetings. So we in the council have had about six weeks to look good and ask any questions. Yeah.
You want me to read it all?
If you want to, but you don't have to.
Well, you want to get out of here before dark?
Yeah, that would be nice since dark is at 10:00. Whereas the Schwartz Creek City Council is required to approve a budget in accordance with the General Appropriations Act and Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act. And whereas the public hearing was postponed and held in accordance with the city charter on May 28, 2019. And whereas the Schwartz Creek City Council finds the following fund-based budget to be an accurate and desirable instrument to appropriate funds to serve the needs of the city of Schwartz Creek. Therefore, be it resolved, the city, Schwartz Creek City Council hereby adopts the following 2019 to 2020 fiscal budget based upon the following tax mills. Would you read it?
No.
I'll read yours. General operating level, 4.8289 mills. Public safety, 4.9000 mills. Street levy, 4.2200 mills. Sanitation levy, 2.6270 mills. Thank you. And the rest of the motion, the several pages on the bill. We can all add a major spending there, just. Is there a second?
Second.
Any wish to address this?
Just a question. We're targeting to be, if I have a pension funded at 110%, according to last council meeting. And we're currently at the 98% level. Can you tell me when do you expect we'll be at 100%? Or is that kind of ballpark?
We just got our actuarial evaluation Friday afternoon. And our funding ratio has dropped slightly. They're changing their assumptions again. They used to assume an 8% return on investment. Then it dropped to 7.75. Now they're proposing to drop it to 7.35. While making some other adjustments in inflationary figures for wages that you anticipate current employees to have going into retirement and their final average compensation. So I don't know the answer. But we are funding what's owed at a ratio far greater than 100%, if that helps.
Yes.
And we're still extremely high. We're, I think, at 96% estimated for December 31 of 2018 funded. And the numbers are very manageable. This will obviously be in the council packet for the next meeting. And this is why when we have those discussions about, well, the creation of the police authority, Metro PD, and how they're funding pensions at an ongoing rate of 110%. This is exactly why. Because if you pay what they say to pay, inevitably they change their assumptions. And then you end up with a pension system that's not adequately funded. Keep in mind, some governments and other agencies Keep in mind, some governments and other agencies are below 50%. And for a municipality even our size, owe millions. Millions. More than one or two years' general fund total revenues in some cases. And our number is much more manageable as a percentage or ratio of what we spend each year and as a ratio of what the expectation is to have a pension system that's fully funded. And so when the police department actually had their audit last month, they're showing sustainability because of what's been set aside for that group and what the city paid to make sure the employees we were sending to Metro were funded. Does this make sense? So a lot of the years we had built up for Metro's current staff were served under the city. We had a responsibility to fund pensions as earned for time with the city to the tune of 100%. So that happened and that's working. Our AFSCME unit, which is a labor unit responsible for much of the office and DPW operations, is still over 100% funded. But the supervisors' unit, which has, I think, the largest amount in annual retiree contributions, dropped slightly. So the short answer to your question is, we did take a step back this year. But it's, we're still very manageable. We're still making sustainable effort to fund it on an ongoing basis. And we'll have more information as we move forward. And the supervisors' unit is closed. And so what that means is the only expenses are for those active retirees receiving pensions. And I'll digress for a moment and explain that we will have years, as these units do final, final closeout, where we'll be paying to overfund the pension system with the understanding that there will be a refund at the end. Example, if I was the last retiree of the city and I'm collecting a certain amount a year, I get a hundred bucks a year as a retiring, the MERS pension system maintains that they have to have at least three years of my retirement stored away or invested. So they have to have $300 to pay my retirement. If they expect I'm going to die at 78 years old, then when I'm 77, the number would be 100. We're going to make payments statistically over a large number of people to make sure that the last check goes out the last day someone's alive and receive it. But of course, what you can expect is, even if you meet those timeframes by some form of magic, leading up to that, they're always going to ensure that there's at least $300 in there for the last person who's getting a hundred dollars a year. And then, once I disappear from the earth, the $300 then gets returned from the pension fund to the city. So when they talk about funding a pension, it's a theoretical number based on experience, studies, and statistics of life expectancy, final average compensation, and investments. And so they've got this big pool of money, and they anticipate that pool of money, invested the way that they're investing it, will be able to provide for annual payments to everybody while decreasing its principal, sort of like a reverse mortgage, until the last payment goes out and the fund is empty. But because they maintain at least three years liquidity for the pension liability, we will be paying more into this at some point, even if we are 100% funded. And then it really does come down to our experience. It won't be averages and statistics and metrics based on the national average of how long retired police officers live. It will literally come down to our retirees active in the system and what they're, what they've earned and how long we pay them. Okay? So there's a big unknown in this. And it's unpleasant to talk about when determining how much value these can be set aside. But these are discussions that, with a closed unit, we'll look to have moving forward. You don't have these discussions with private or public entities that still have active employees participating in that pension system. Because they're going to be entering retirement at some point, and the pot of money remains. And it's never going to be empty because the younger people replace the older people
Right.
as they continue working and retiring, like we think social security should function.
Right.
So our system's going to be a bit different, but not uncommon among municipalities who have gone from active pensions defined benefit, meaning we guarantee a payment down the road, even if we're not putting anything in today. And now everything we do is defined contribution. Meaning it's, it's not up to the employer what remains in there or what is investing to be there when someone retires. We only guarantee what we put in paycheck by paycheck. Simply put, we use a 401 as opposed to guarantee a pension now. And so by transferring from defined benefit pension to defined contribution, we have this unique circumstance where we're trying to provide a pot of money as invested to be sufficient to pay for everyone's guaranteed pension that's put in their ears here and is currently receiving those payments monthly. Does that make sense at all?
Thank you.
It's a very confusing topic. We can go, maybe we'll have a workshop on it one day. Because it is important and it can impact us at least temporarily, moving down the road at some point.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding the budget? We are ready to vote, Pam Clark.
Pinkston?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item of businesses, a resolution to amend the Penderk A of the code ordinances by adding conditional uses consolidating districts by use and adding decoder. And Pinkston, you can read that. Or at least parts of it that you read. First part, actually the.
You'll leave all 44 pages?
No, you don't have to get all 44 pages.
Whereas the Public Act 110 of 2006, the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, enables cities to regulate land use through the creation and enforcement of zoning maps and regulations. And whereas the city is pursuing certification as a redevelopment-ready community, performed a zoning audit that revealed the need for incremental changes to the zoning ordinance. And whereas the planning commission, with the assistance of staff, a professional planner, and input by the public, reviewed specific changes to the zoning ordinance at a regular meeting on June 4, 2019. And whereas the planning commission, at a public hearing at their meeting on June 4, 2019, and reviewing the criteria in the zoning ordinance, section 31.04, found the proposed zoning ordinance amendments to be in the best interest of the public. Therefore, I move the city of Schwartz Creek ordains, city of Schwartz Creek ordinance number 440.
Second. Motion to make a second. I would like to speak to the motion. The planning commission has been very hard at work revising all of these aspects of it. And it is far superior to what we have now to what we had before we started working on this. It is much easier to follow and to figure out what you have to do if you're planning to build something in the city. I'm hoping to do at least. So I would recommend that we adopt this. Anyone else?
Just so people out there know, this is just for lighting standards, landscaping, site plan review, special land uses, conditional land uses, ordinance amendments, and conditional reselling agreements, administration and enforcement. And it's both in written and.
Tables.
I just had them, whatever. It's very nice.
Is description warranted? Or is, I know the planning commission has been going over this thoroughly. Councilmember Dix has been able to observe a lot of that in attendance. But there's a lot there. I don't know if folks would feel more comfortable with brief description or self-explanatory at this point. But I'm here to talk out of your play.
Unless you're a builder, you probably aren't really interested in it. But we've got two builders here. Any comments you'd like to make about this, have you with that table?
We look forward to the next process.
And this will be available at the. And where can they look at this new ordinance? Where will you have it available for the public?
Front desk here at City Hall. We'll figure out which parts need to be published because I can't imagine all 44 pages will be. So some summary description at least. And then, of course, we'll find the ability to publish this. We have a third-party service called Unico, which codifies these ordinances and indexes them online so they're searchable and in a format that makes sense. So they'll be available there. And that's linked right from our website where people can find it independently. The entire charter is code.
And will that be in the newsletter that we have this new?
If there's room, the newsletter's getting busy. And we're trying to keep a user-friendly font.
For the old people, so we can read it fine?
Well, put in all the information we'd like. Even with quarterly newsletter, it's like six font. And it's not pleasant.
Okay.
We only have as much time as people have between their mailbox and their curb. You gotta, you just gotta jump off the page. And I'm not thinking of, I'd be the same thing. Recycle bin, it's right by.
Yeah, you don't, you don't put it in the recycle bin?
No, I recycle, I recycle.
I was going to say, really? You just note in there would be good.
Yeah, could we, like, in terms of publishing it in the newspaper, could we, could we simply post the link to the document on the city?
We're going to find, there's, it's a legal requirement. Practically speaking, the best way to do it's probably online for most people. Or obviously you can email out copies or have it available and hard copy. So we'll find out what works best and then what the legal requirement is. So I don't know if the link would be sufficient, if we have to publish it verbatim or a summary with the understanding that it's available in certain mediums. But we'll do what we have to do.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Mr. Gilbert?
Yes, it says on here, minimum lot coverage for all buildings. 35% for R1, 30% for R2, and 35% for R3. So you take a piece of property, you could have 35% of that covered by buildings. Is that what you're saying?
For R3 especially, that's downtown residential, that's, that's prob, that's very much accurate.
Well, where you live, you get a lot more properties than your buildings.
I know.
Yeah, some of those lots downtown are only 40 feet wide.
Okay.
And that's what, we have reduced setbacks and everything for that. That R3 district was created about 10 years ago when it was discovered that what worked on 100-foot lot in Park Ridge under a 1990s code, no longer worked for someone trying to build a garage in a downtown flat. They're dense, and that's just the way it is. So they created that district to model what would have been built pre-World War II. And that, it's a tough environment to work in physically. Those houses often were built without carriage houses or any thought of a vehicle ever existing, so.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? We are ready to vote on this, please.
Ruth?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Gilbert?
No.
Hicks?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Pinkston?
Yes.
That motion passes. In the bygone, a resolution A to B, a resolution to approve the site plan for a Brewer condominium. And would you please read that?
I will.
Right, thank you, Mrs. Ruth.
Whereas the city received a proposal to construct 15 condominiums on two parcels of land zoned CBD, those parcels being 58-35-576-001 and 002. And whereas the project is a permitted use within the CBD and requires a full site plan review. And whereas the planning commission, in reviewing the application materials and review criteria in zoning ordinance, section 8, 18, 20, and 26 through 29, among other sections, finds the proposed site plan meets the intent of the zoning ordinance and recommended approval at their meeting on June 4, 2019. And whereas the city council finds that the site plan meets all other general and specific standards applicable and the following conditions are met. Transfer of the property, less the fire pit to the developer conditioned upon filing of final master deed. Now be resolved that the Schwartz Creek City Council hereby approves the site plan of preliminary condominium master deed as included in the June 10, 2019 city council packet, subject to the conditions in this resolution.
Seven. Motion to make a second. CBD, she read me a central business district.
Thank you.
Questions or comments?
Yes.
Okay. How much did we pay for that lot?
There's two lots there.
I know. With the one that had the house on it.
Yeah, that was, that had to be around $100,000.
It was about $168,000.
I don't think it was that high.
Well, that's what Paul Beeky told me.
It might have been for both.
Well, anyway.
The stable purchase and then the home.
And we're going to sell it for $10,000?
The next resolution speaks to the sale. It's separate from site plan. It has to remain so.
Okay, but I'm.
We're not going to talk about it. I'm not deflecting that.
I'm going to tell you. I do not believe that's a place for condominiums. And in this Brewer thing, it gets people too because that Veterans Memorial over there is built for all veterans. And another thing. When you have something at the, at the Phytoss Theater, wherever, where do the people park?
We have two other parcels available that are similar, grass lots, as well as new permissions from the Raceway property right at the Anticic Drive.
No, I don't believe that's a place for condominiums. And another thing I got to say about them. The one in the, you got them set up, and the one in the middle has windows in the back and the front. There's no side windows. Because it's in the middle. And I don't really think people want to live in the middle of that. It just, I mean, we put a lot of time into that Veterans Memorial because it's where it is. And it was, I'll say peaceful through there. All you got is the post office. You got this, the city offices, the fire department, and that. And what are you going to have after this is done? I'm telling you, you're ruining a nice piece of property, green space.
I have a question.
Chuck Pinkston?
Who was the vote on the planning commission? To approve it?
It was unanimous.
I think it was unanimous. The minutes are included. If we care to take a look.
I've had a lot of people tell me. In fact, I had one memorial day up here at the Veterans Memorial tell me that that's where they're going. And I said, yeah. He says that, he says that's stupid. And then I had somebody else tell me that was the dumbest idea we've come up with yet. People don't really want that there. That's the residents. And I thought we were here to do what the residents want, not what we want.
Mr. Mayor, do you want me to respond or?
Not just yet.
Okay. The vote was eight to zero.
Eight to zero. I'm a veteran too. And I haven't heard one person come up to me, and a lot of people know I'm on the city council, haven't had one person come up to me and say they don't want that there. So I'm not as involved as John in the American Legion, but in the Amets. I guess we're going to disagree on it.
Mr. Mr. Question referenced to the site plan itself. Of the storage units down in the basement area?
I'm Brett Jory. And I'm representing our construction. Yeah, the, we're still kind of trying to tweak the interior layout, facilitate the basement. But yeah, I've had discussions with Adam that. But, uh, yeah, I've had discussions with Adam, especially the first three, that will have basements. And, uh, yeah, essentially, I mean, it'll just be normal basements for our storage.
Oh, okay, I, I thought it would be, well, I didn't, that was my question, I didn't know if it was like one huge basement area where they all share units for storage.
It'd be individual.
Individual, okay, so, that's my, that was my only question. Thank you. Mr. Saddle?
Just, did you raise your hand? I'd just like to say, I, I really enjoyed the, the front look of the buildings and I would have to imagine that, uh, at the price that these itself were, especially when finished, the backyards where people would, would likely, um, be busy and noisy are very separated from the front. And I, I think that it would be beautiful, I think it would add beautiful photos of, of that area and encourage downtown business. People living there are able to walk to Fortino's. It'd be much harder for them to walk to Meyer, but they can walk to Fortino's and safely walk home from making down to Janes.
You got other places you could? Mr. Saddle, take down the helm.
Adam, I'll just put this out here as an initial disclaimer, that preferences can never be wrong. If someone says they prefer to see green space and someone else, uh, something different, or townhomes, it's, it's not a right or wrong. In government, we often aspire to, uh, an experience in which we understand the process is as important as the outcome. And this has been something that's been worked on for fifteen years. With the inception of the DDA in two thousand and three, a subsequent housing study, a development plan, the acquisition of those parcels, as indicated by Paul Beke, the former city manager in the council at that time, with the intent to build a community center or the building on it. And when those plans fell through and the economy started to recover, we engaged in conversations with the community, workshops, meetings, all the things we have at our disposal, to find out what happens next. And there certainly people didn't like to see downtown with a lot of green space and downtowns must have green space. When it came to these two properties specifically, in reference to some of the studies that were done over a decade ago about how to build a successful downtown, I don't mean a big one, but one that thrives. One that does have residential families, couples, people, as well as retail and hospitality businesses that serve the local population. There was an opportunity to try to fill that void and utilize the space to have that symbiotic relationship begin to grow. So you've got new households, um, that serve different types of populations in a close proximity to create this walkable downtown people want. Probably two or three years ago, active planning began on this, planning began on this specific site, led by the DDA, an architecture firm from Lansing. And again, as much public input as we could muster, to try to figure out what, if any, and then if something were to happen, how the development could occur on this site. And to save a bunch of time, I can say that after about two years of deliberation, which even for government is slow, but steady and sure of itself, this plan has emerged. We've got a very viable local partner with capacity that's able and willing to do this. And we've got a plan that in specifics has been extremely well vetted and executed by the input of the DDA, various professionals, planners, architects, engineers, and then the subsequent review by the planning commission and now it's before council tonight. And to be clear, there's two things to consider. One is the site plan, with the understanding that site plans have to accomplish certain things in zoning. The second item, which I'd ask, we separate for discussion purposes as part of the next item of business, is the city's role to play. Whether they wanna do this or not, whether they wanna sell the property or not. That's a separate item. They can be distinguished and should be for this purpose. So I can speak to my belief that this process objectively has been a long time coming, with a lot of effort, a lot of awareness, and a lot of input put into it. And it's not gonna make everybody happy, but I think this community is at a point now where we have to effect some change, this change happens. I don't, I mean, not to play this card because it sounds, you know, cliche, but I'm not sure the Indians would like what the town became between eighteen-hundred and eighteen-seventy-seven when the grain elevator was built. I'm not sure those families would have liked to seen what happened when Winchester Village, our landmark housing subdivision, was built. In fact, I know there was a ton of animosity between the Miller Road residents and Winchester Village people when that happened, then the plant was built, then the highway was built, and then the mire was built, change happens. And we have direct control over what's happening here. And it may very well be that we have a lot of people that wanna see that as green space. As a trained planner, I advocate against it in a downtown area. These units have value for people that wanna age in this community and I'd hate to see them be built on a green field outside of town if town they wanna live in, when we can provide a walkable experience in a small community downtown and help support some of the businesses that are, that are taking the chance and moving to downtown because they see some of this change being affected with the streetscape and some of the other things we're doing. And so even in the small communities, you put your density in the core, you try to take the pressure off the outskirts. You create a, a dense, walkable environment where it's appropriate, where the services exist, where the culture and recreation and other businesses exist. Communities that have developed high-rise senior housing three miles outside of town made mistakes in doing that. Because the change will happen somewhere. And so as a planner, I think it's the right move. You know, it, it may not be the best in everyone's mind, but we're, we're guiding this at some point and this is what the process has led us to. So my, my single person's opinion as a planner, I support it. I think it's the right move to make in advocating for denser form of housing downtown with a type of housing style that's not offered very much in Genesee County, admittedly. But there are people that do seek it out. And two, the process has been rigorous, with a tremendous degree of scrutiny and professionalism and input. And if we're only hearing these comments now, frankly, it's too late in many respects. Because this process is fifteen years old and three years in the making, heavy-handed at the DDA level and planning commission level. And many people have come, attended, have written comments, or had discussions one-on-one. And the type of change we can affect at this point with the whole concept is, is difficult. It's never too late, but it's extremely difficult and almost unfair for those folks that were put in that position to try to be responsible for determining the future of the site to just hear about it now. So, I'll say that.
I would like to make the comment that past conversations included, uh, bringing, uh, a younger demographic to the Schwartz Creek community. And that's kinda key of what this project is all about. To bring a younger demographic to our community. That's part of our strategy. Thank you. In the packet, there was, um, a comment, I believe, from the neighbor immediately to the north who's got the property right next to the property that was, uh, planning to build on and he was absolutely thrilled at that plan for that. He's looking forward to it being there.
Sir? I didn't know this was downtown.
It's very much downtown.
Through the DDA.
Well, you know, I've heard other comments too about how dumpy downtown looks, Miller Road. Now what are we gonna do with that?
It's under construction as we speak.
No, I mean, look at the, look at Love Grove and that over there.
I might break protocol, but can we get, can you say something?
Sure.
On behalf of what business community sees of downtown today and what they're aspiring to and how this all comes together? If agreeable to council?
Yes, I was gonna ask you something.
Sure, Eric Jameson, fifty-fifteen, property owner. And the house next door, I can't remember the address. But as you guys know, we've been, uh, me and my wife and, and I'm on the DDA as well. This has been a long process from the Highland Square streetscape, uh, right up through the townhomes and everything else. There's, there's tons of hours and tons of input and committees and subcommittees and steering committees that have been putting to this. And as we see now, downtown is in the very beginning of the construction phases. So to answer your question, Mr. Gilbert, uh, what are we doing about downtown? We're doing a ton of stuff downtown. Um, we've, as you know, we bought the old Turka building in fifty-fifteen. We've got massive renovation plans for that, a whole new, as it turns out now, it's gonna be a whole new building suited for downtown. We're in the process right now of working at eighty-four-eight Miller Road, which is the old Schwartz Creek computers or they inhabited that at Center Creek Plaza. Uh, we're in the process of beautifying in front of that, we're gonna occupy that space, uh, with the restaurants as well. And all of this is a drive to get the downtown rejuvenated. That's what everybody wants as far as from the input that, that we have in the steering committees and I think the drive, the master plan of the city, fifteen years in the, in the worst. This townhome project up on the, on the blank, silver grass over here is part of those, what I think is an integral part of that. That walkable downtown, vibrant downtown to where we have businesses that wanna come in, uh, people that wanna be there, all that ties in with people living close, walking, and all that. For the, as far as what we're doing with the, the Miller Road, it, in my opinion, in five years, people that are gone and come back, they won't recognize it, it won't be the same place. Uh, our beginning phase is now, I suspect that with the, the Love Grove's property being empty the way it sits now, once the streetscape is done and once the other two properties downtown are re-transformed, I think it'll sell and it'll be transformed relatively easily. I think it'll go fast. But I guess to answer your question, what are we doing about that? We're doing a ton of stuff, we're over every day.
You gotta have things there that people will get down there for.
You're absolutely right. You're absolutely right. Part of that is, as a business owner and as a vested property owner downtown, we have to have people to get there too. So, and I think that's part of where that tie-in is with this, is that getting people back to downtown and filling in that infill that we have up here with those townhomes, that is directly, in my opinion, the people, that's gonna attract the kind of people that come to the downtown kind of shops that we wanna have.
So how many people do you think you're gonna have there?
Uh, I, I know, I don't know how many people will inhabit those, there's fifteen units, but it's, it's more about the movement of what the downtown's gonna be and what the momentum of the city is gonna be.
Well, I don't believe this is gonna help this downtown area at all.
Sure, and nothing like that, and perceptions aren't wrong, and preferences aren't wrong. So again, what we're doing is we're doing a ton, we're doing a lot of stuff down there. We're, it's been, um, going like crazy behind the scenes as you guys all know, uh, but it's starting to surface now. That iceberg is starting to break the surface and we're starting to see what's happening. I'm working every day, we're, we're out there with the contractors, um, and they're, with everybody in the room and so there's a ton coming and I think it's, again, to respect your point of view, the Veterans Memorial is a magnificent thing. I think it's a great thing, I think it was, it was designed, planned, is promoted very well. I think having more activity there is only gonna spotlight that and bring more attention to it. Instead of having it empty and calm and somber, which is, you know, enjoyable in its own way. But when you have that influx of people down there, more people can enjoy it, more people can see it, we can show it off.
I think the word that comes to mind is magnet. Something that attracts the people downtown.
Sure, if we want.
I think we need to use that word, a magnet.
Yeah, and, and if we want to, I mean, in, in all reality, if we wanna change our downtown, we have to change our downtown. I mean, we can't envision a downtown where there's people and there's shops and there's businesses and there's activities and events and, you know, people are coming from other communities to enjoy our downtown. We can't envision that without change. And I think the biggest thing is this is that, part of that change, it's, it's a change overall. If we don't want it to change, then we don't want it to change. But if we do, then we have to change it.
Yes, sir. Well, I wanna ask Adam. Where's the car show going next year?
I don't know where the car show's gonna go next year. I don't know. But I, I would advocate that, I mean, that's one day a year. Are we gonna maintain a piece of vacant land in the core of our downtown?
Yeah, it's used more than once a year. I'm sorry, but.
Well, I know, back to the, back to the bricks, uh, last, was it last year? Or a segment of them, used, uh, the west side of Schwartz Creek. Last year.
And that's where we're planning in this year, but the plans are, uh, because of the construction, we're gonna move that downtown, we'll have a model for a car show already set through our back of the bricks that they can use if they wanna do.
I mean, I, in point of fact, I think it could probably go on the Raceway property. That owner is agreeable to using acre upon acre upon acre right at the Anticic Drive. And that can be leveled off and used for that purpose as a practical solution to the loss of this property. But. Jane Jacobs, one of the most famous urban planners I've ever seen.
Well, then you got, then you got people.
Say this one thing. She said you can't bring people downtown, you have to put them there. And this is, this is coming off the heels of everyone destroying their downtowns post-World War II in the sixties and seventies and making them business districts. And then they dry up after everyone goes home at five or six o'clock. People have to live in downtowns for them to be successful, that's about as factual a statement as you can make. And this is one piece, it's not all of a sudden gonna change because this might happen. It's one step and I do believe the business community is watching to see if these steps, one brick at a time, can be taken. Because downtown Schwartz Creek is, uh, it's unsuccessful at this point, I mean, that's just not it.
It's definitely successful.
You drive down Miller Road and, and people feel it's, it's vacant, it's not maintained well and the public amenities aren't very good.
But you're talking to bring some of that. Wouldn't it, you know, like the racetrack? Well, you're not gonna have, I mean, when they have it here, I mean, there's people that go down there. You stay hankering down.
The grass part right here, not, not up off Moorish Road and in the back of the paved grounds. It's the Raceway property abuts the theater and public safety building right here. And actually, superior parking for the concerts, as it were, which we can probably get off of.
We did have a car show at the Raceway one year in, in Swap meet and that place was packed. You couldn't hardly get in and out of there. And I'm talking about a lot of parking lot at that racetrack. So they're amenable, that's sure an alternative.
But, but council or village, there's nothing, nobody's gonna convince one side or the other this is right or wrong. Your preference is extremely valid and all the work that's gone into the Veterans Memorial, is, is astounding how far that's come. So this may not be the best solution or the best idea, that's possible. The council is being forced at this point in time to make decisions that affect change and they are sometimes cutting edge, they are sometimes different, they are sometimes innovative and just like any business, some will fail. And I think that's part of this penalty of leadership is we have to accept that unless we're willing to accept what downtown is today. Which I find to be unacceptable. And so what happens now? Businesses aren't willing to make investment without some show of support or change or investment by the government, the city, uh, the communities in the wing wondering whether the town's failing or not in some instances. And I'm a hundred percent certain we'll be successful. And we'll have a number of initiatives we take to get us there, this is one. But I, I can stand by the process all day long, that's not been a failure. This project may or may not be the best, it may or may not, may not make some people happier, some people upset. But I stand beside the process and the amount of effort that's gone into it.
Tell you one thing, it's bold. I'd like to ask all the members of the council, if you wish to speak, you've raised your hand and waited to call. Uh, we're not here to argue with each other. Do you wish to speak, sir? Do you wish to speak? Yes, I, I would like to say that this, this project, uh, in my, in my opinion, is bold, is a bold one and in the right direction. That's my comment. Anyone else?
I think you're wrong. It's over a lot of other people.
I have not spoken of one. I'm not saying they don't exist, but it's tough to come by after the fact and.
You want me to send them all?
Yes, absolutely. That's how government works. In fact, if their, if their opinions are so strong, it's, it's disappointing they haven't made one of what might literally be a hundred meetings over the last fifteen years. Or send an email, or a phone call, or, or stop by. We've done workshops in many different venues. We've done workshops in many different venues. I believe you, John, absolutely, sorry, Councilmember Gilbert. But it's untimely for us to truly respond well. Government is so slow, for this very reason it's slow. And so for this information and to be coming out now is, it's difficult to work with, given all the other input we've had so far.
Other comments from anyone?
I was on the original workshop when they started that, and they broke up into groups, and then we got together and come up with, like you say, so many ideas for what they could do. I didn't hear one person say that it shouldn't be developed. And I'm talking about people that are involved in the community. That was made up of a lot of business people, and, you know, they were, they were enthralled with the fact that maybe that thing was finally going to get developed. So I know John doesn't agree, but we'll see what happens. I think it's going to help the downtown.
We have a question. Could you call all the motion?
Kramer?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Gilmore?
No.
Hicks?
Yes.
Kreeter?
Yes.
Pinkston?
Yes.
Root?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item of business is a resolution to approve a draft purchase and development agreement with property owned by the city. We are back to Mr. Root. Yeah. No, I believe I'm right.
I can do the.
Oh, you did it. Okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Kramer?
Yes. Whereas the city owns two lots of the supervisors plat located on the northwest corner of Morris Road and Paul Fortino Drive, PIDs five eight dash three five dash five seven six dash zero zero one, and five eight dash three five dash five seven six dash zero zero two. And whereas the community has been engaged in finding a preferred option for the permanent use of these parcels. And whereas the downtown development authority, in working with the public and other city commission and staff, finds that the downtown housing is a feasible use that would further the vision of a small community vibrant downtown. And whereas the DDA conceived and planned for the use of this site with the help of a professional architect, subsequently invited developers to proceed with partnering in development of the site. And whereas RBF Construction presented themselves as the only local developer with capacity and a desire to meet the expectations of the DDA. And whereas the DDA and RBF then jointly proceeded to detail the site plan and architectural renderings, eventually recommending approval to the planning commission in the early 2019. And whereas RBF then submitted a site plan that was approved by the city on June tenth, 2019. And whereas the city desires to transfer the property to RBF Construction with conditions so development of the site may commence. And whereas the city has been working with RBF on determining the total project scope, available incentives, and cost as completing terms and finalizing a sale value. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the city of Schwartz Creek, city council authorizes the city manager, in consultation, city attorney, to complete and execute the purchase agreement as included in June tenth, 2019, city council packet including a provision for the requisite public inspection period contingency. Be it further resolved that the sale instrument shall be made available to the general public for a period of not less than thirty days in accordance with the city's land sale policy of April twenty eighth, 2014. Be it further resolved, the purchase agreement shall be reviewed by the city council subsequent to the review period.
Second. The motion's been in seconded. Are you speaking to the motion? Mr. Gilbert?
Yes, it's like I said before, about how much did that lot cost?
At least a hundred thousand for the home.
Okay, well, I'm telling you, and who paid for it? Where does the money come from?
City's general fund.
Yeah, the residents, the property owners. Now, if you sell this for, it doesn't even say in here what you're going to sell it for.
Development agreement, the purchase agreement indicates a value of ten thousand.
Okay. Now, that means that all the taxpayers are losing ninety thousand dollars.
If you never sold it, they lose a hundred, plus the fifteen hundred.
No, they wouldn't, because they use it.
They use it for parking, probably eighteen hours a year, and for a car showing for above ten hours a year.
It doesn't matter. We don't have any, it doesn't cost us anything to have it.
It only costs one to two thousand a year, operate and maintain. But you're right, if we sell it, you won't be able to park there or have a car show there. That's true.
But.
But to get the money back, the house was blighted and had to be demolished, I don't see any viable way of.
Plus than you had that, that cost. Well, so here we go. We're going to screw the taxpayers again. Excuse the language, but that's exactly what's happening.
Mr. Pinkston?
I don't understand the logic behind that, when you tax those units, and these are high-class units, you're going to get that money you spent on that Morris Road back in three years, and then you're going to keep getting it for the next thirty years. How can we, as taxpayers, think that we're getting the shaft? It's just the opposite. We're doing a service to the city by developing more revenue, that we can do more things and make the city better.
But the property owners.
Mr. Gilbert, you're going to have to finish.
I'm done.
Okay, but the property owners have already paid that. Now, how's it, now, do the property owners get any of this back?
Eventually, yes. Well, the city will get the money back.
Right, just what I'm saying about the.
The property owners.
Property owners get the shaft.
Mr. Gilbert, the property owners don't own the property owned by the city. They don't get to live here in the city council.
What do you mean they don't own it?
They don't get to live here.
What do you mean they don't get to live here?
I'm following up your idea of ownership and what you get to do because of owning.
Well, we all own it.
Together.
Yeah. As long as you pay your property tax, you're part owner.
I'm done.
Could you maybe speak to how the ten thousand dollar price was come to? Like, was there something that led to?
Yeah, sure, 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 sure. So admittedly, it's tough to put a price on what the value would be for this type of development, because it is a unique style proposition, right? Condominium townhomes, and for the record, they are, it's basically like Spring Brook, but instead of duplexes, they're triplexes. It functions in the same way, in the essence of there'll be a master deed and a condominium association, seventeen hundred square foot units, two-car garage, basements, individually-owned, occupied, individual water sewer, no common sanitation, or parking, or lighting, or other amenities that speak to multifamily housing. That being said, it's a small acreage parcel intended for the condominiums development. Single-family lots in downtown have a value as best as we can ascertain based on some comparable sales between five and ten thousand dollars a unit. So we've got two units here, if they were to be sold for single-family. Certainly, office or commercial's been ruled out as a value comparable, and so what we're left with is trying to ascertain the value for the fifteen units as opposed to, say, two. The problem we have there is the, it's the unpredictability of the market for this product, okay? And so what we did is we did settle on the exchange value we have for single-family. The understanding is, we can't improve our cost. If we put a hundred thousand dollars or more, say a hundred and fifty, into purchasing a house, subsequently had to demolish it, and then we carried it, operated, maintained, owned it for years, there's not a viable way to sell that and get our money back. The decision here is one of what's in the best interest of the community, and there's competing interest there. Money is a means to an end. If we can sell this property for a billion dollars and take care of all of our streets and recreation needs, that's great. Money has a use for a government. However, when we go to spend money on a top lot, it's just gone for a. But the top lot has intrinsic use value for people. I would advocate that these two properties don't have a ton of intrinsic use value for most of our taxpayers, because it is literally parking for six events a year that we can replace, and for a car show, which I also think we can replace. If anything, we sunk those costs in, we can't recover, and we continue to operate it with no revenues. Putting this back on the tax rolls, if these units priced between two hundred and twenty and two hundred and forty thousand apiece, is that reasonable?
Yes.
We could see tax revenues annually of approximately thirty thousand dollars, easily and quickly offsetting the investment we had, probably the only way we could offset the investment we had. There's other economic development issues or reasons why we think it's beneficial, but I'll leave that aside. So the short of it is, we just wanted to make sure we covered our soft costs for closing, survey work, and the participation in the design, with the understanding that the base price is somewhere between five and ten thousand dollars per lot for a single-family lot in downtown, getting us in the ballpark. But to say we could get more because there's multiple units involved is unproven, and we're hoping that any value or risk, the risk that builders absorbing and doing a unique project by having the lower purchase price than what might be thirty acres or something comparable for housing somewhere else, is predicated on the fact that we are having a higher level of investment put into these units. Does that make sense? And so in the site plan and the provisions that were required by the DDA planning commission for the unit's composition and architectural amenities, those proposals, proposed changes or improvements are going to be attached to the development agreement as an exhibit. And so that's been part of the negotiation. For example, when we talk about requiring basements on first phase, that's something the developer wasn't keen on providing at first, because again, the sale market's unproven, and that's a cost of ten to fifteen thousand dollars per unit. Okay, but we require it. As a partner in this, we require it. You have to do it, even if you lose money on the first unit sale. So then, of course, that comes into play when you start talking about the sale price. And so at the end of the day, it's a negotiated price intended to cover our soft costs of participation, with the understanding that resembles a single-family equivalent. And that some of the negotiating points as a partner in getting this design are in the quality of the structures themselves. To say simply, we're trying to overbuild these condominiums in downtown to set a market. So they're adding that value in the units, and it's going to be attached to the development agreement and the master deed and the bylaws, with the understanding that there is a reversion clause in the sale, and if not completed or not completed timely, the property does come back to the city. So as we look at this package, there's a sale price, and that's the first thing people look at, and they should. But we're trying to look at the bigger picture of total impact on the community. We never want to just be blinded by the fact that every decision we make is monetary, because we only use the money to improve quality of life. If we can get to quality of life directly through this investment, I think that is valuable and that needs to be considered. That being said, we're looking at overbuild condominium units in an unproven market, and that this is what we were able to agree upon as the price. Often, you will see these properties transferred at no cost or the proverbial dollar, when municipalities engage in a public-private partnership for development. Does that make sense? And so please look at the development agreement in its entirety. There's a lot of requirements they have to meet, and there is a reversion clause. I mean, if they don't meet those requirements, then we come back full circle and reclaim the property.
Can I just add to that?
Yeah.
A little bit. Yeah, Adam's exactly right as far as the partnership and, you know, if there's just strictly a fair market value assigned to the lots, then if it was sold to RBF Construction, we wouldn't have had to listen to the DDA, we would just have to the ordinance as strictly written. If we were some flat-by-night contractor that just cared about profits, we would have slapped up the cheapest looking year lost six in a row of the townhouses, we would have put up six, you know, rented them all, and like I said, it would have been much less of a voice, and rather wouldn't have gotten to where I think we want to be, both as a, you know, as a local developer, investment in this community, and, you know, the goals that the city and the DDA board are trying to accomplish. So I'm pretty proud of how far along it's come. Obviously, nothing's perfect, but it was part of that incentive of the city's investment in the land that's helped to facilitate both process.
Mr. Trey, do you, there are a couple questions.
Yes.
One of the questions I have is, I believe in the, in the condo development, it mentioned possibility of down the road, forty-five units instead of fifteen. So you're looking at if this actually is successful, and there's a lot of interest in it, enlarging it beyond the two lots that we are proposing to sell you?
We would certainly be interested in knocking on some doors and seeing if we could acquire additional property. Obviously, if we get all fifteen built and they sell their packages, for sure, I mean, it'd be, I would love to see that, both obviously as a for-profit company and just for what we could do to the community because of all the requirements that were put. You know, these are higher-end, and I think it's going to attract the type of people that we want in the downtown area. People with, you know, maybe on the higher end of disposable income would be able to spend at the businesses downtown.
Second question is, I understand that you're looking at this as a model that you might wish to promote in other communities and build similar things in other cities, correct?
Yeah, yeah, certainly. When we put this kind of time and effort into it, if you have one formula, yeah, you move forward and use it.
So Schwartz Creek could be on the cutting edge of a new age of housing in Tennessee County.
That's certainly where we pulled some of our ideas from. If you drive around some other more larger, more, just more money involved, actually the school architects designing some of the buildings, some you may be familiar, if you drive through Lansing, it was colorful and condominiums, I think, one of the high-rise. Yeah, it looks like it's a community on the rise, and I think that's what we're trying to bring in. You know, it's not the super alter, alter, modern, modern look, we're not completely trying to, you know, bring in something that, you know, this community isn't, but I think it's progressive, and hopefully, overall, people will learn to love it.
The planning commission looked at several different designs when we first guided thinking about this and also the DDA, and tried to marry the idea of the modern townhouse to the two-its- or more like Schwartz Creek and the city, and he did, Axanjal, bringing the two together.
Thank you.
Couple of questions. I had the discussion with Adam after the planning commission meeting, and one of the questions I had was, do you have a timeframe that you have to complete this, or it reverts back? Did you agree, is it three years, six years? You were talking about that question.
So that's going to be Exhibit D of the development agreement, which is going to come back in a month. So Exhibit E is the site plan, the other, there's going to be an amendment to Exhibit A, the description, because they're going to leave out the flag retirement that set the transfer, so there's. So there's some changes forthcoming. And I think the initial phase is going to be one year from date of sale. And then the condominium act again provides for the structural decorative elements.
I'm sorry, I was...
By filing the master deed, the developer will be setting the future of the site. So that all the units will be filed as existing individual pieces of real property. And again, condos are different than flat and subdivisions, but for all intents and purposes, the site plan, the bylaws, and how the property is going to be owned in partnership with the fifteen co-owners will be of record filed at the county clerk's office. It can be amended, of course, but it would go through the state's processes to do so. So we'll remain a partner, in essence, once that occurs. And so first phase, we look to see done within a year to ensure that the condominium is filed, that the building does commence, that they're vested, and everything is current. And then it depends on absorption. It could, I mean, even at full capacity, it might take two or three years to build just because of the scale.
Right.
If demand is hot, it's hard to sit.
And the property that's left will be, until it's started, you will keep it so that it looks nice? It won't be like dirt piles or anything like that?
Within, I guess, within reasons for the, to facilitate the construction of the, of what we're breaking ground on, correct?
Well, during the construction, it won't be like that. But once those are done and you're looking and they're sold, if it's a longer period of time than what's expected, the site itself will be kept nice until you start the next phase.
Correct, and that's, our hands are almost forced by the sort erosion rules. We can't leave up just a pile of dirt. We can, but we have to keep reapplying for the permit and maintain the fire damage. Yeah, we're gonna...
Okay.
We're not going to have...
We're hoping that that doesn't, you know, that you'll sell or anything or... Okay, thank you. It's been nice talking with you. You've answered all my questions well, and I really think that the city can see into the future. We don't know what's going to happen. But it seems like this agreement has enough commitment from the city and you guys that it will be the best that can be. And I'm looking forward to seeing the, what they look like. And I think it will help the Veterans Memorial. It's not like we're putting up, we're having a high-rise or anything like that that we're putting in. And I think the people that live there will enjoy having the Veterans Memorial as a nice place to go. And I honestly think it will work well together. One more question for Adam. Down here, it says, "The purchase agreement shall be reviewed by the city council subsequent to the review period." What does that mean? And if people look at it and they say, "No, we don't like this," and we can change it?
Yeah, like to say that the instrument's dumb or the sale price is too, whatever. It's available for public, again, government's a bit slower, but we're sure of itself. And so we have a charter process that requires that after tentative approval tonight, nothing actually happens or transfers, changes hands until the thirty-day inspection period equipses or is satisfied, and council can come back and review the documents with whatever comment might have been received.
So if there's something we missed in their side, then it can be modified? Something that, you know, a loophole or something in there? Or something that's not written right? So they will, there's still another time, another section of time for public comment and input?
Yeah.
Did you have your hand up, Mr. Kramer?
No.
Addressing the vacant land issue. If you look across from Mary Creepo, where Bonnie Burt used to live, that house burned down six, seven years ago. Beautiful lot, big lot on a hill, wooded. It's been for sale for six thousand, and nobody buys it. So vacant land is, unless it's in the woods, it's not worth a lot of money.
If I might follow that up. Ready-to-build condominium lots with all the infrastructure, water, sewer leads, everything are selling for about ten to twelve in the established condominium subdivisions that we have. We tried to give about ten thousand for a vacant lot downtown that the city owned last year for an infill housing. And ultimately, the developer chose not to pay for it because the market couldn't support it. And so I'm pretty confident to say that if we just listed these as single-family sites, we probably couldn't get five thousand apiece for them. Or me, you know what I mean? It's such a small market with so few comparables that you only have some of the anecdotal evidence like that to go on to follow up with the comments from earlier. That I would advocate people take the development agreement in its entirety when they look at benefit, public benefit with payment for what's being sold. But even if it were just the ten thousand, it's probably not far off at all. In fact, it might be right in line. Because we know we wouldn't put commercial or office or industrial or something would increase intensity there, admittedly.
Any other questions?
Not that I can think of right now. I'll call Adam.
All right, Mr. Gilbert. Yeah, Adam, years ago, Volbiki said that this was purchased to keep the commercial out of it.
I don't recall that. They purchased it in part because they thought the senior center in a community annex would be built.
But he didn't want any commercial business in there either, like a muffler shop or something.
Right, oh, absolutely. Yeah, that's never been a part of any of the DDA's plans or recommendations.
Well, I know, I'm just saying, that's...
Yeah, that's true.
That was told to me. Mr. Gilbert, someone's asked you for a break. We'd like to vote on this before we take a break, so. Okay. All right, Madam Kirk, would you call it off?
Farmer?
Yes.
Gilbert?
No.
Hicks?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Pinkston?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes. It will take a five-minute break. Come back with a word?
And we are now on Resolutions AF. Resolutions will ban the five-k foot race street permit. And we use this term as a term of...
Yes, sir. Whereas the Schwartz Creek Community Schools is a recognized not-for-profit entity that operates in Schwartz Creek, and whereas the Schwartz Creek High School Student Council proposes to amend the date and time of a five-k color-run road race that will be centered in Winchester Village from Saturday, May eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, beginning at five p.m. to Tuesday, September seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, beginning at six p.m. And whereas the city council finds the organization and event to be beneficial to the public and in good standing. And whereas the Metro Police Department of Genesee County has reviewed and administratively approved street usage for this event. Now, therefore be it resolved that the City of Schwartz Creek hereby approves the application for a street usage permit to conduct a five-kilometer-foot road race on Tuesday, September seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, six p.m. to seven-thirty p.m. Applicant, the Schwartz Creek High School Student Council, as represented by the Schwartz Creek Community School District, in the care of Principal Kitchen, race to be held in Winchester Village subdivision in accordance with the application submitted under the direction and control of the Chief of Police and contingent upon the provision of valid insurance listing the City of Schwartz Creek as an additional insured party.
Second.
Motion's been seconded, and speaking to this motion is the color-running race. We've already considered this at two previous meetings, so it's not exactly a surprise for us. I believe we're ready to vote Madam Kirk, for reasons.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Pinkston?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Motion passes. While out of business tonight, the overturned property acquisition. And there's a few...
That's a good one.
Honey, honey, Gibson.
Don't be all right now.
Whereas on June tenth, at public meetings, the Schwartz Creek City Council reviewed the staff recommendation to acquire a specific parcel listed as Genesee County Treasurer's Tax Reverted Property currently under foreclosure. And whereas the property for which there is a public purpose includes Young Drive, parcel ID number five-eight dash zero-three dash five-three-one dash one-three-two. And whereas the city council finds that a public purpose exists for the acquisition of the vacant property located on that purpose being the control of development in an area known to have unresolved drainage issues with potential for this site to be used for stormwater detention or related purposes. And whereas the county treasurer's office requires certain conditions and stipulations relative to the acquisition of tax-reverted properties by local units of government. Now, therefore, I move the City of Schwartz Creek enter into an agreement with the Genesee County Treasurer's Office and further direct the mayor, David Krieger, and city clerk Connie Eskew to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. Agreement as follows on page eighty-one and eighty-two.
There's a final resolve of the...
We have further resolved the cost to purchase such property being nine-hundred-seventy-eight dollars and twenty-two cents, as well as the addition of the current year taxes, fees, and assessments shall be appropriated to the unencumbered, unreserved general fund, one-on-one fund amounts.
Second.
Motion made seconded. And we're sticking with it. How close is this to your property that came through?
It's a good buy.
Is it, is it close to the property that you own down there?
It's four or five lots away.
Four or five?
I own, I own one of the back lots back on that street, but it's down... I don't know why the people didn't buy it because they offered all those people on Chesterfield to buy those lots for four thousand dollars back eight, nine years ago. Can't believe anybody didn't buy it, extend their lot.
But they didn't.
They didn't. Somebody didn't.
All right, anyone else wish to speak to the motion? Madam Kirk, would you call it off?
Hicks?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Pinkston?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Gilbert?
No.
Motion passes. And that concludes council business. We'll now open the meeting to the poll once more. Anyone think of something you'd like to pass the conference about? Chief A?
Mayor and council, anybody interested in coming to the police authority board meeting for June? It's been rescheduled to Thursday, June twentieth. We've had due to some scheduling conflicts. So it'll be Thursday, June twentieth, at ten a.m. at the historic board.
Are you going to announce free pizza or anything like this or not?
We'll work on that. Pizza, ten o'clock tomorrow night. Would you like to get some pizza?
Yes, sir.
Man, on that email I sent you with the canine dog?
Yes.
The one I liked the best was where the radar sign said twenty-five, and somebody posted right next to it a big sign that says, "Top speed or new record?" Yeah, "New record fifty-eight." We need to do that just for a couple of days to see what people react. High score it was.
The dog in the airplane is pretty good, too. Threatened, public TSA, it runs.
Anyone else? All right, then we'll close the whole meeting and for remarks and council members. Mrs. Ruth, do you have anything to say tonight before we leave? All right, Mr. Kramer?
Yes, just a few items here. I'd like to thank the cooperation with the city on getting issued, taken care of at the Perkins Library, the carpet. And I was wondering if our small nonprofit could have access to the city's website to link our events on it. And also, there's been interest expressed in the community for a new statue honoring our Schwartz Creek area first responders. So if anybody's in interest in a fundraiser, perhaps in the future, let's try to get together. It was suggested to me at the event, at the fireball we had Memorial Day, that a site, a possible site, could be that area we talked about where the, where they retired the old flags?
The fire?
Yes, that area. And I would like to thank the team for bringing the city near to its completion of the ready, redevelopment-ready community certification process. Thank you.
Mr. Gilbert?
What? Uh, you got the wrong name.
Wrong, yeah, I, yeah, he's down there. I'm sorry, Mr. Kramer.
Oh, thank you.
Mrs. Hicks?
Nothing, I think I've talked enough, thanks.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
The C U org, actually.
Yeah, yeah, so. It's about this ten thousand dollars for this lot. Now, I remember we bought the lot on Third Street and tore the house down, and then sold half to one and half to the other. We spent more tearing the house down than we sold the lot for. And so that's not the only one. Oh, that's all I got, proof of the neighborhood. Any other stuff? I like the fact that we don't always agree. I mean, that was a, it's been a good meeting and some heated discussion. John's wrong, like he usually is. That's all.
Okay. Sorry about the weather that we had at hometown days, especially on Saturday. We had that storm blow through and kicked everybody out. And I'm glad we were able to hold up the ski dry just for a bit of time refuge while that storm come through through. So that helped, but it turned out to be a muddy mess down at the field. I was holding hometown days. I am very happy that many residents showed up, they went out, took down woodships and other material to help take care of the muddy places and get us through as best as we could that weekend. So thank you to the citizens of Schwartz Creek for stepping up and helping make it a more successful celebration for our community. Yes, sir?
Yes, I noticed today there was quite a bit of water standing there on that property where those scents were. Because this ticket wasn't, you know, last week, this weekend.
We've had a lot of rain, you may have noticed that. Who else?
I got three things, quickly. Some phrase I was looking for earlier about First Amendment and condominiums, prior restraint. If you want to read it. Two, I'd like to poll the council to see if they want to follow what Monday council's model is for meetings. We're going to have a meeting scheduled on the next agenda. Covers all twenty-six of our, twenty-four of our meetings. And we always meet at seven p.m. Sometimes municipalities have a practice where they have two morning meetings a year. Different crowd can show up for that purpose. I don't know if council's interested in that or not, or if they just want to keep all twenty-four meetings at seven p.m. So if there's interest in a morning meeting, or two, or four, or whatever, let me know. And we can put those out of the schedule and go on it, discuss it at the next meeting. And lastly, I was afraid that when Kurt Borat left, we'd be just too darn agreeable. So I thanked John Gilbert. He always speaks his mind. And even if we don't agree, I think we've still got probably the most professional council you'll observe anywhere around. And so I'm still happy to do business here and proud of the actions we take and how we go about it. So even if there's not agreement, it's a good place to be. Probably the best place to be on a Monday night.
I already said it. Harry said it.
I did.
Anything else? All right. Rather than just sitting here staring at the walls, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion we adjourn.
Yay!
All favor say yes?
Yes.
You're adjourned.